Gun Sports Radio is sponsored by Love Radio Network. It's time to get educated on your Second Amendment right. It's time to get locked and loaded with Gun Sports Radio. Your hosts Dave Stahl and Lance Pelkey will teach you everything there is to know about firearms, self-defense, and the laws that affect your American right to own and bear arms. Now here's your hosts Dave Stahl and Lance Pelkey. All right, folks, welcome. Gun Sports Radio right here on FM 96.1 AM 1170, The Answer. Please visit our website, www.gunsportsradio.com, or check us out on Facebook backslash Gun Sports Radio. All the information is right there. This segment is brought to you by The Gun Range San Diego, 7853 Balboa Avenue in San Diego, 10 to 10, seven days a week. Go to thegunrangeSanDiego.com, find out all the benefits, features, clubs you can join. I mean, you name it, it's amazing. It's the Nordstroms of gun ranges, just not the price. All right, Michael Schwartz is off today, but we have Lance Pelkey and Joe D'Amici in the house.
Here we are.
How are you guys today?
Wonderful day to be here. A great day to be in the studio talking on the radio.
You know, I want to start.
Sunny, warm.
Yeah, sunny, warm, and deep behind enemy lines in Commie, California. Here we are, so.
Absolutely.
But we're so happy to have Mr. D'Amici in the house today, and he's been writing some really smoking articles lately with the San Diego County Gun Owners Organization. And so I'm happy he's here to talk about the latest one.
Yeah, what's the latest, my friend?
So I guess what we wrote about last week was the attack on the Second Amendment. And everybody, you know, all gun owners know that. It's been under vigorous attack for a while in this country. But a lot of the other, the rest of the Constitution is under attack. I think the Second Amendment acts kind of as a lightning rod for everything else.
Absolutely.
And if you look at different things, like Governor Cuomo in New York is using the state agencies to pressure banks not to do business with companies that manufacture firearms or ammunition.
Salesforce.com came out to do the same thing. It's just horrible. Credit card companies.
Yeah, and you know, and it's one thing when, you know, companies decide they're going to do it, CEOs like in the Salesforce case, when the state, when a governor decides that he's going to use the state tools, the regulatory tools to pressure companies not to do business with a group of companies that are completely legal, that he just doesn't care for, you know, that's a little different. When you look in LA, the city council thing about having contractors disclose relationships with the NRA if they want to do business. You know, these are freedom of association, freedom of speech, things like that. So there was, you know, and I talk about those in the article. There was a couple of kids in New Jersey that were suspended from school for posting pictures on their personal Facebook sites of being at the range. And I think one of them was with a family there.
That's horrible.
Yeah, there was a woman in Florida that was suspended indefinitely from a college there for posting pictures of her and her husband at the range.
Wow, I'm sure Dave Stahl was suspended a lot as a child, but probably not for something like that back then, but things have changed so much.
Oh, things have changed tremendously. Did you see that article? I know, I hate to even use it, but it's on Facebook out of Zero Hedge about the violence, the rise of mass knife attacks around the world.
Lance Pelkey posted it.
Did you?
Yeah, that's something.
Wasn't that, I mean, we're talking, I mean, one guy cuts up 10, 20 people.
Kids in schools and Japan and all this other stuff. I mean, we all hear about it.
So it looks to me like it's maybe not the weapon, it's the person that's manning the weapon.
Well, like we say.
And I believe they're experiencing the same thing in London where they've banned guns, and they actually want to ban knives in London.
Well, yeah, then, and so they have the depositories, you heard about this. So the mayor says he puts these depositories and tells people, hey, you want to be a good Londoner, put your knives in these depository deals, and then the bad guys just go steal the whole deposit thing.
Sure, and they have all the knives in the world.
Yeah, it's just fabulous.
They just don't, yeah, it just makes no sense at all.
Yeah, the dumbness that goes on and on. So anyway, great article, Joe.
Yeah, and well, like I said, that's what's unfortunate too, because, you know, we have these shootings here from time to time. They're going to continue because we don't, we don't address the real issues. The other thing is there's 329 million people in this country. We have bad people, they do bad things, occasionally they use guns to do that.
Sure.
So without addressing the underlying stuff.
And the bad people are usually have psychiatric issues, but yet we closed all the psychiatric hospitals down, what, how many years ago?
Yeah, I don't know.
And dumped them all onto the streets. So these poor people, if they don't physically reach out for help, this is what you end up with.
Yeah, and even, you know, even if you didn't have that issue, if you talk to psychiatrists and people that work in mental health, you know, if you ask them, can you tell me for sure that that person is dangerous, that they're going to hurt somebody? They can't tell you for sure.
No, no.
They may, but I mean, the person may go the next 50 years and never hurt anyone.
Have you ever woke up and been in a bad mood?
Occasionally, yeah.
But that's really it in a nutshell, just how far do you take being in a bad mood? I mean, you can take it to the extreme, I mean, but there's no way to control it. And taking all the guns, I mean, if somebody really wants to hurt somebody else, they'll find something to hurt you with.
And again, and the real answer is to allow people to protect themselves. I mean, that's really the answer for, you know, and that's not for everybody, but if you want to take, you know, accept the responsibility for your own safety and protection, you should be able to do it.
Talk to the people that have done it. Talk to the people that have, you know, you know, kept a situation under control by having a weapon. You know, they're the ones, I mean, they're your best advertisers, because if it wasn't for their ability to protect themselves, they could have got hurt.
And speaking of that, I did post another article, I don't know, I don't remember if it was an ARW Hawkins article from Breitbart, but along the lines of the Colorado guy in the movie theater, along with others, specifically with him, he chose the soft target, and that was the movie theater. He was thinking, you heard about this, he was thinking about the airport, but they had guns at the airport, so he chose the movie theater, along with numerous other ones.
Well, see, and they know this too, and this isn't speculation or theory. They know this from information they've captured from people that have done these shootings.
The guy in the bar, he knew that law enforcement can't carry a weapon inside. And we as concealed carry, we can't carry in a bar either.
Yeah, exactly.
Right. So, you know, they're not stupid.
Yeah.
And the media is nice enough to make sure they're well informed.
Yeah, it's a tough deal.
Yeah, so again, like I said, you know, the real answer is to allow people to protect themselves. And, you know, that's where it's going to have to go, because you can never, these things happen everywhere. It's not like it's got to be three in the morning, or you have to be in a bad part of town or something.
Or wake up with a bad mood.
Yeah, there you go. These things happen every day, they happen all over the place. They happen here in San Diego.
Yeah, going back to what you say a long time ago, and there's plenty of laws, you know, against doing all this stuff, but at the end of the day, Americans, America was founded on, you know, the founding fathers saying, you and I and everybody else, we're going to give you, you know, rights, and you know, and if you do wrong things, and you know, we're going to come after you. Other than that, you know, you've got the right of free will pretty much to do your thing. And I still believe that today, that, you know, you've got to give that person their own responsibility and the right to protect themselves as well. If they do something wrong, then we come down.
And it was worse back in the, back in the day.
Can't even imagine.
I mean, if I didn't like the way you parked your car, I could call you out, shoot you.
Right.
You know, I mean, it's ridiculous, but we made it through that, we didn't ban anything. The thing that people don't understand is look how many good citizens own guns. And when you look at the percentage of how many crazy ones that, you know, do these terrible deals compared to the ones that don't, it's astronomical.
Well, that's what I said, when you keep those numbers in context or in perspective, I mean, it's, you know, we live in a fairly safe country if you look at it that way. If you look at the number of gun owners, and then you compare that to the number of, you know, violent incidents that involve guns, I mean, it's, it's an incredibly small percentage, and it's just, you know, you can't make it perfect. I mean, it's just, people are going to be people.
Let me ask you this, if they decided to come take our guns away by force, what do you think that would look like?
Well, a lot of people have already circumvented that in the sense where, you know, this, they might have guns that are off the record, and, you know, they didn't want to bring them forth with all these, and that's what's happening now. For instance, with the stamping laws and things like that, a lot of people are saying they're just drawing the line in the sand and saying, no, we're just not going to comply.
I mean, I think, I think the people that want to take them realize they better not.
Look what's going on in New Zealand. So what, they say there's 300,000 semiotic weapons, and they've only had, they asked them to be turned in with, or something like, something ridiculous like that.
Yeah, and they just went through that in New Jersey too, with the magazines, where they did the same thing that California is trying to do out here, where they made them illegal, and people were supposed to turn them in.
Yeah.
And they've had zero turned in. I forget who it was, someone wrote an article about that where they contacted.
Were they shocked?
They, I don't know who should be. They contacted a number of police agencies in New Jersey and were asking how many were turned in, and they couldn't find any at all.
Well, just also real quick to finish up the segment, you know, I was just watching that series Chernobyl on HBO. I don't know if you've seen it, Dave. It's really interesting. But the bigger picture for me is, you know, all governments lie. And at the end of the day, the founding fathers knew that their own government, that their own baby that they put together was going to lie, so they allowed for the militias, and they allowed for them to be armed with military weapons.
Isn't that amazing how smart they were?
People forget about this, people shooting each other, you know, let's just remember that at some point, if this government gets too wacky, at some point, we have to have a way to have it all in check.
That's right.
And that's why we have the Second Amendment.
That's it.
My opinion.
I totally agree with you 100%. All right, let's take a quick break. We come back, a whole lot more right here on Gun Sports Radio, FM 96.1, AM 1170, The Answer. All right, folks, hey, welcome back. You're listening to Gun Sports Radio, FM 96.1, AM 1170, The Answer. I'm Dave, he's Lance, and he is Joe. Hey, folks, have you heard us tell you how easy it is to install a CaliKey, and how easy it is to make your AR California legal in recognition of recent gun law changes? Well, those law changes could put the unknown knowing owner of an AR-15 or a 10 on the wrong side of a jail door. If you want your AR to keep its pistol grip, telescoping stock, foregrip, and still have a detachable magazine, check out CaliKey. CaliKey is a cost-effective, easy solution that will allow you to keep your AR compliant and future-proof your AR from all those horrible new California gun laws. Keep your entire AR collection intact at a price you can afford with CaliKey. Check out CaliKey at calikey.com, that's K-A-L-I-K-E-Y, K-A-L-I-K-E-Y.com. And by the way, do you or any of your family members keep a taser, pepper spray, or a firearm, or another weapon for personal protection? Well, what would you do if you got involved with a police officer and was arrested? Who are you going to go to? Try Firearms Legal Protection, they are the best. For less than $10 a month, you'll have peace of mind knowing a 24-hour hotline and legal representation is waiting for you. It could be John Dillon from Gatski Dillon and Balance LLP. Check these guys out, Firearms Legal Protection at firearmslegal.com. And for a great lawyer, if you have a gun issue, that is Gatski Dillon and Balance, go to ca-firearmslaw.com, ca-firearmslaw.com, or give John a call at 760-431-9501. So Lance, who you got on the line?
We've got Mr., well, council member, San Diego City Council Member Chris Kate on the line. He is, Kearney Mesa is part of his district, and he also, I've seen him many times at the Gun Range San Diego. So Council Member Kate, are you there?
Good afternoon, how you guys doing?
We're doing great. Thanks for calling in on one of the first sunny San Diego days we've had in a long time.
Thanks for having me.
The pleasures all are, so if we get right into it for a second, I understand that you were on the committee for the city of San Diego and talking about this, you know, supposed gun storage law or ordinance that's coming to fruition, maybe.
Yeah, so earlier this week at our city's Public Safety Committee, the city attorney, Mara Elliott, presented a proposal that her office had drafted, which would require all firearms in the home to be stored at all times unless it is on your person, or in the immediate present as if it were on your person, which I don't know what that means. Spice to say, this goes well above and beyond state law when it comes to firearm storage, but the committee moved forward her proposal to the full city council, and I would imagine it's expected to be heard at the full city council, I would say, within about a month or so.
So people had to vote, I guess, for this? I mean, council members had to vote, how'd that go?
Yeah, so myself, Council Member Barbara Bree, and Council Member Vivian Moreno were at the meeting. We were absent, one member, Council Member Monica Montgomery, she was not in attendance at the meeting. There was a vote to move it forward with a support recommendation. That motion failed because you need three affirmative votes to make your recommendation, with myself opposing the proposal. That motion failed, so now it moves forward to the full city council without a recommendation. Just a technical matter, but this, no matter what, this measure will be heard at the full city council, and all the members will be asked to put on this measure whenever it's put on the agenda.
Excellent, and I don't know how free you are to speak about what actually took place during those meetings, but I'm very aware of the supposed Brady folks, and, you know, the Moms Against Guns, or whoever they are, constantly parading in the various offices down there, and most of the city council people, you know, drinking their Kool-Aid. And the flip side of that, you know, the other side is never even, are called with any of this. Did you ask, you know, what type of backgrounding they did on, did Maria Elliott do on this, or did any of that discussion take place?
It was, it's very political.
Yes.
Our city attorney has been very adamant about being present at various events with Mom Demand, Brady, others in this regard. And this is, it's interesting, because this is the first time that I recall that her office, which is, the city attorney's office is a non-legislative office. This is the first time that I recall her actually putting forward a legislative proposal from her office. So this is, this is new territory now, but I don't imagine her reaching out to any other council offices. I mean, I was not made aware of this until with DocDor, or other pro-Second Amendment organizations to get feedback on this. And that was what's really evident, because if you heard the presentation by her and her office, there's no way to enforce this. There is no way to enforce this. This is going to be something where if officers are in your home for another purpose.
Sure.
And they happen to see something, then they'll tack on this charge on top of whatever they were before. But there is no, there is no way possible that our police officers are going to be able to proactively address this or enforce this, because you run into a whole host of constitutional issues about entering somebody's home.
Yep, I agree. And was Gore ever consulted on this that you're aware of?
I don't, I don't know. I don't, she didn't, she didn't make that be known. And I wouldn't believe that it would otherwise. I mean, again, this is a very political and emotional argument. If you heard the testimony, a lot of folks who are from the Brady campaign and Moms Demand, there were all emotional arguments. And they talked about children and whatnot, and what I try to state is that state law already covers this. State law already states that if you have children in the home, or someone who is not authorized to handle a firearm, you're already required to have your firearm locked or stored away from access.
Exactly.
It's already state law. And for us to go above and beyond that now and say whether you're a single individual, or you're a couple who lives without kids, or a senior now, and saying, no matter what, you have to have your firearm stored as well too. Well, we don't have the luxury of knowing every individual circumstance. We don't know if that individual who's living, who has a firearm next to their bedside, or close to them, doesn't have the time to unlock it, or remove a trigger lock, or a cable lock, or get out of there safe, because they have a restraining order against an ex-spouse, or who knows what the situation is, or your circumstances are. There's no reason we should be, we should be demanding that and putting that on individuals without knowing that. I don't, I don't think that's my role as an official to make those requirements on somebody without knowing what the full circumstances are.
Yep.
Hey, Chris, this is Joe. Is this, isn't this proposal kind of similar, at least in principle, to other things that other cities have tried that have been overturned by the courts? Like, for instance, in Washington DC, I think they tried to require gun owners to store guns in a disassembled condition, and I think they've tried things in other cities in California that haven't worked like that?
Yeah, there are, so there are, I believe, 11 other cities that have similar language to what we have. And it presents an interesting legal challenge, what's called preemption. Essentially, can we go above and beyond what state law already requires? And that's, that's a legal question, and I'm not an attorney, so I probably have the message to answer that question, but I know other cities in California have tried this. In our research, what we found is that even the state tried this, something similar, and it failed. And for us now to go above and beyond what already the state has tried and failed to do, I think says something is where we are as a city. But that's an interesting legal challenge, potential legal challenge, that I wouldn't be surprised if it's, if it's tried, if we were to pass this and it stands, I wouldn't be surprised if somebody were to challenge this law because of that preemption issue and go above and beyond what state law already requires.
Well, absolutely, and what a waste of resources for the city too, to have to fend something like that. And these guns are already sold with a lock every time someone buys them. And, you know, good for you for being the voice of reason. I mean, we really count on great, not just representatives, but we see you as a leader. And there's a difference out there between a representative and a leader. And Chris Kate, I got to hand it to you, you're a voice of reason. You believe in America, and Americans making good decisions for themselves, and, you know, what does government have to do? How can they, you know, come into people's houses and tell them, you know, what they, you know, what they want to do? The other thing is we're seeing more and more on the radio show, when we talk to sheriffs from outside of San Diego County, and this had to do with the whole CCW thing. The old school way of thinking was, you know, citizens should not have guns for the most part, and if there's an active shooter, they should run and hide. But what we saw was this trend, and you're seeing it more and more with law enforcement, and that is no, you know, good, responsible people, legal responsible people should have the right to protect themselves. And also too, when it comes to active shooters, on a separate note, then, you know, they should even fight back. And so, and so you're starting to see this change out there. So to me, this smacks of the, you know, of the old school leftist argument that's failing by a way, by the way, across Europe and the rest of it, and across San Diego. And I want to commend you again for standing up and being that voice of reason. It's just fabulous, and thank you so much for coming on the show.
Absolutely. Hey, how do people follow you, Chris?
So you're on Twitter, it's @ChrisJKate, or Facebook is ChrisJKate as well too. I would definitely encourage everyone to continue to follow this, and I know it's difficult to go down to city council meetings because it's in the middle of the day, on a weekday, and all that, but when this, when this comes forward to the council, I would definitely encourage, if you're able to come out and testify and give your viewpoint, because I know the members of the council aren't hearing it from, from those who are presenting this issue, but to come down and speak, call your council member, let them know that this is not a partisan issue, this is not a Republican or Democrat issue. We have speakers who are against this, who are liberal progressive Democrats, but support the Second Amendment and their right to have a firearm for their protection in their home. And I think that council members need to hear that.
Do we have a date and time yet?
He hasn't got that yet.
We don't, we don't know yet, but I'll be sure to pass along to Michael. I've been, I've been in contact with Michael Schwartz about this as well too, in the past couple of weeks. Once I hear of a date, I'll make sure I pass along the message that we get to word out.
Well, happy to have you on. You're more than welcome to come back on air and give out that great news. And thank you very much, and keep up the good work, and you've got a lot of folks behind you, believe me.
I appreciate that. Have a great rest of your weekend, guys.
All right, buddy, thank you. All right, we're going to take a quick break, and we come back, a whole lot more right here on Gun Sports Radio, FM 96.1, AM 1170, The Answer. All right, folks, welcome back. You're listening to Gun Sports Radio right here on FM 96.1, AM 1170, The Answer. Don't forget to go to Facebook, you can check us out at Gun Sports Radio. You can also go and send us an email at gunsportsradio.com. If you have suggestions for show topics, or maybe you have something that you'd like to have us discuss, we're happy to do that for you. But in the meantime, have you heard us tile you all about installing a CaliKey and how easy it is to do it? Well, let me tell you, California legal is in recognition of recent gun laws, you need to know how to get an AR-15 and an AR-10 on the right side of a jail door, not the wrong side, and you can do that with CaliKey. You can get your pistol grip, telescoping stock, foregrip, and still have a detachable magazine, all with CaliKey. CaliKey is a cost-effective, easy solution that will allow you to keep your AR compliant and future-proof your AR from all those horrible new California gun laws. Keep your entire AR collection intact at a price you can afford. That's calikey.com, K-A-L-I-K-E-Y.com. All right, this segment is brought to you by The Gun Range San Diego, 7853 Balboa Avenue in San Diego. Open 10 to 10, seven days a week. Go to thegunrangeSanDiego.com. You will be totally blown away, no pun intended, but the website's full of tons of information, and they're adding new firearms to their library. And Casey, boy, you had some bad-to-the-bone additions to your rental fleet this week.
Yes, he does.
Yes, he does. How you doing, Case?
Pretty good, how you guys holding up?
You know, living the dream, how about you?
Ain't that the truth? Yeah, we just actually, one of the coolest ones we put on there was that Walther Q5 steel frame.
I've seen that.
Yeah, we put it on there, and I actually will be posting a video on it later on today. We put the new Holosun red dot on it, and it just shoots like a dream. The new Holosun is basically their brand of an RMR, and what's cool about it is it has a 10,000-hour battery life, because it also goes on solar on it, plus you get three different reticles on it. So it'll do the dot, it'll do the circle, and then it'll do the circle dot, which is kind of like the EOTEX. We've been calling it the donut of death, and that thing is getting rented out left and right, everybody wants to shoot it, so.
Fun.
Yeah, so it was good. What else is new? We actually just got another bulletin from the DOJ, giving us more guidance on the ammo background checks. So the background check system's going to go into the drill system now.
Which, what does that mean to a layman?
So the drill system is the system that we go in when we start typing in all your information that goes into the background checks and whatnot, that goes to the Department of Justice. So that's where there's going to be a special tab on it now that they're implementing. It hasn't been put on yet, they said they're going to put it in right on July 1st, so we haven't been able to get to explore it until the day of. So we're just letting everybody know that when it comes to July 1st, don't come in and buy ammo that day, please don't do that, mainly because every other gun store in California is going to be on that site trying to figure it out, and I guarantee this is going to crash, crashing left and right, left and right, it's going to crash.
Are you guys still selling ammo now? I mean, they still sell ammo, but you got the deals?
We're still selling ammo, got plenty of 9 mil, 45, 40, 223, all the major rounds, we're still selling it as quick as we get it in, we're getting it out.
And we encourage people to go down there and get it now, man.
I'm telling you, man, if you don't, you're going to be bumming.
Cool.
Yeah, so we got that new guidance from the DOJ, and we're still reading over it. It kind of sucks that it's not implemented yet, so we can, you know, get familiar with it. So it's going to be, going to be a major headache, especially since they put on the drill system, because we need that system to, you know, start registering guns for people, and also approving them for the take-home. So if they people, you know, want to come in and it's the time for them to pick up their gun, and I'd have to be like, well, the drill system has crashed and it's not back up yet, so I can't, you know.
Do they care?
You have to wait.
No, do they really care when you call them?
Absolutely not, they don't. Well, I mean, we called the DOJ, and some of the employees there, you know, we call them so often and whatnot, so we start mailing friendships with them, but they're on the lower echelon, so we'll ask them things, especially us being a rental range.
Right.
How is this going to affect us? Like, can I sell people ammo for them to shoot the guns we rent? Or is it going to be a service for us?
Ooh, that's a good question.
What's going on? That's what we're asking them, and they're just like, oh, we don't know yet.
Well.
What do you mean?
How could you not know?
Exactly, you know, three weeks later, and then we're asking them, but, you know, people that are permanent residents with I-94s and other stuff, like, they can legally own guns and stuff. So maybe they don't have a California driver's license or anything like that, how is it going to be for them? Do you have to have a California driver's license to get the ammo? What's going on? And it's still to the point where it's like, oh, you know, just kind of wait and see, we're oh, you know, just kind of wait and see. We're figuring it out as we go. Well, great. Because this is gonna, the first week is gonna be, uh,
Ugly.
Uh, it's gonna be, it's gonna be madness in here. So we're definitely dreading it, but we're getting all of our guys spooled up on how it's gonna work. It's, looks like it's gonna be kind of a, you know, actually doing the paperwork and whatnot. It's just gonna be a couple of buttons, just kind of like normally buying a gun, but not with all the information and whatnot on it.
Right.
What I'm actually hoping it could be like is so, you know, they're kind of going through vehicle and firearm registrations and whatnot. So anybody that's purchased a gun is going to be in that DOJ system. So I'm hoping it's gonna be like, you know, I type in their name. Okay, cool. Yep. They've done this. The background checks are good. Click a button, get them out of there.
Well, I get my rifle on the 26th, so I'm golden.
Is that when it gets out of jail?
It gets out of jail on the 26th. I cannot wait.
Oh, man, those gophers are gonna be.
And I already bought a thousand rounds of 22 from Gun Range.
Nice.
Yep. I told them to. It was a great day.
I see.
Yeah, it was, you know, we're, we're waiting for this whole system. And that's gonna be, you know, it's doomsday is kind of how we're looking at it if we're in California. So I mean, the lawsuits are gonna be going into this. It's gonna be ridiculous, especially if it does start affecting rental ranges and stuff where they say, oh no, you gotta do background checks before you can sell a rental gun.
Don't give them any ideas.
We're trying not to, but I mean, every time we think it gets slightly better, it's just getting worse.
Let's talk about fun stuff like, uh,
Fun stuff.
Did, did they, they tell you that, uh, you guys ordered me a new Benelli M4 tactical shotgun?
No, they did not. We're getting another one in for you?
What?
What did you get? Did you get the pistol grip or did you get the buttstock?
I went with the buttstock. I went natural this time, uh, just because, you know, that's how I was, uh, you know,
Raised.
Born, raised.
That is, that is actually the one I prefer. The M4 is, it's a great shotgun it is. But what I've noticed is when you put a pistol grip on it, it kind of lengthens the actual buttstock itself. You're actually getting a longer length of pull for it. So the gun actually gained a couple inches on it.
Now, when you were in the Marines, did you ever use one?
Uh huh. Yeah, we use the 10-14s. I actually have a Benelli 10-14 in here. It's bronze. If anybody wants to come buy it, we got it.
Oh.
It's on, these ones are the ones that they have the collapsible stocks on it. The 10-14, of course, we have here is pin stock because California loves.
Right. We can't use collapsible stock.
So yeah, we use the 10-14 in the Marine Corps and it's, it's an excellent shotgun. It just eats everything up and it runs simple. But that's the cool thing about Benellis is they're extremely high-class firearms. Like you pay for it, but you get such a great product back.
Yep. And speaking of, speaking of high class, that's Gina, our good dear Gina. That's one of her, that's her favorite shotgun.
Oh, really?
Tactical. So we shot sporting clays with Gina and she's using her M4, nailing them.
Yeah, people use.
Fabulous.
Four or the Benelli M2.
Yeah, M2's another really.
Yeah. That's the one I use at dove hunting. And it's just, they're, they're semi-automatics. It'd be one of the more preferred ones for me. They're smooth and you can run them so fast. Uh, cool thing about the Benelli is all the accessories that you can do with them. Um, their pump actions are good too. Um, but they're just mainly known for their semi-automatics or their brake actions. Their 828U is one of the better brake actions that we have here. Um, but yeah, the, the one that you got right there with the normal buttstock, that is my preferred, uh,
Isn't that nice?
It's just nice. The way you can shoulder it a lot quicker. The pistol grip is nice, but you know, everybody's gonna be shooting to each their own.
Yeah, that's why they make Fords and Chevys. It's just, it's something nice to keep next to your bed stand in San Diego.
Locked up in a box with a big padlock on it and a rottweiler.
Yeah, I'm gonna be having like three chains and a couple.
Oh, yeah.
I know because they're gonna, you know, that's usually how I had is I have a Mossberg 500 and I just have a pistol grip on it. So it's nice and short with a little side saddle with some extra rounds. And that's just how I was running mine for a while. Um, and then I just switched over my pistol by the bedside with a light. Uh, but that's a perk about shotguns, especially I tend to prefer pump actions more. I, I mean, just the manual action of it, I just, it's just satisfying to me. But having a pump action means you can do a lot more to it. As long as you're not chopping the barrel or anything else. As long as you have an 18 and a half inch barrel on it, you can pretty much do whatever you want to.
Well, and shotguns are so much fun. And so I appreciate you bringing, you know, that up for this segment because, uh, you guys have a, a whole bunch down there. And people, if you don't have one, you should have one or another one.
I got a Mossberg. I love mine.
Fabulous.
Yep. I love Mossberg. They have that dual extract on it. It's real nice. And I just like the slide action. The Remington 870 is excellent guns too. I just, you know, started off on Mossberg and that's what I stick with.
I like the safety because it's right on top. You don't have to go.
Exactly.
You don't have to go look for it.
Right there. Yeah. Yeah. If, if Remington switched the place of their safety, I'd like them a little bit more. Um, the other shotgun, you know, people used to talk a lot of smack on with the Kel-Tec, mainly because Kel-Tec's for plastic guns back in the day. But the Kel-Tec KSG is actually probably one of our top-selling shotguns. Uh, it's 18 and a half inch barrel. It's a bullpup design, but it holds 14 shells of 12 gauge. It'll be two and three quarter. You can also run three inches in it. I shot, uh, a customer brought us some three inch Magnums that I shot through that and I'll never do it again. But you can do it if you want. And I mean, the fireball that came out of thing, because the whole gun itself is like roughly 22 inches overall length. So you're getting a lot of boom out of a small package. And that's one of our favorite rentals on the range. Like, hey, you want to see something loud that's gonna, you know, kick you real hard? Get that Kel-Tec right there.
Don't put me next to him.
So you're just telling me that's one of these, hey, watch this?
Yeah. You know, it's fun. But again, also realistic wise for home descent, it's, it's an excellent shotgun. Because of how short it is, that's the big thing a lot of people don't understand. Like, you know, in home descent situations, if, most people are not gonna be clearing rooms, you know, clearing their hallways and stuff because they don't know what they're doing. You should really just hold up in your room, get your family in there, keep that barrel pointed out there and wait till you hear police, police, police. And then let yourself be known.
Right.
But if you have training and whatnot, yeah, you can know, take, and you're home.
Let yourself be known.
Exactly.
All you gotta do is rack it.
Let yourself be known.
Yeah, exactly. You know, that's the big thing about shotguns is that, that sound right there. Every single person knows that sound at night.
That's right.
Just a shotgun rack and you're like, oh.
That's gonna hurt.
Going down that way.
That's gonna.
I mean, summertime, you need a shotgun. It's just, you know, it's, it's easy to be outside.
And don't you stack your ammo? You put buckshot in the first, a little heavier in the second.
Oh, my gosh.
And a slug in the third.
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah. I would, you know, I'll just run some double up buck in there. Cause I mean, if I, if whatever's coming at me is gonna take, you know, five or six rounds of double up buck and it's still going, you know what? I put up a good fight, you win this round.
Yeah. Well, that's why I'm, I'm older. I wait for three. And the third one, you're gonna go away. It's just that simple.
Third one, you're going night, night.
Yeah, you're going away. It was a really nice knowing you and I hope there was some money in your pocket. All right. Hey, man. Thank you very much for taking time out of your day and, and it was good seeing you the other day. And I'm sure I'll be back. Tell you what, folks, he's there all day till 10 o'clock. Come on down. Is it pretty busy or is it a good time to come?
Oh, it's, it's pretty steady right now. I mean, we got a couple lanes empty. So if people want to come down.
Cool.
Come on down. We're here.
All right, buddy. All right. You take care and we'll talk to you later. That's Gun Range San Diego, folks. Nordstrom's of gun ranges. You can't beat it. All right. We're gonna take a quick break. When we come back, a whole lot more right here on Gun Sports Radio, FM 96.1, AM 1170, The Answer. All right, folks, welcome back. You're listening to Gun Sports Radio on FM 96.1, AM 1170, The Answer. Don't forget to go to Facebook, check us out, or you can send us an email at, uh, thegunssportstradio.com. We're more than happy to chat with you. Hey, do you or any of your family keep a taser, pepper spray, firearm, or other weapon for personal protection? Do you have, or are you going to get a CCW? Well, what would you do if you're involved in an incident? What are your plans to pay for bail and expensive lawyer fee? Well, do what we do. Join Firearms Legal Protection. For less than $10 a month, you'll have peace of mind knowing a 24-hour hotline and legal representation is waiting for you and your family. That's firearmslegalprotection@firearmslegal.com. Call them at 844-357-9400, 844-357-9400 and get protected. All right, Lance, who you got lined up now? Sam, the, the gunman, he's not gonna call in today because.
Yep. He's taking a little vacation day. Uh, so I don't know. He's gonna be drinking his chocolate milk.
Chocolate milk.
You know, whatever the case may be. But, um, you know, the show, we talk a lot about , uh, different, uh, groups and how to get involved. So a lot of us like to go to the range, stuff like that. But it's nice to get involved and, and go out and use that, um, with, you know, friends, family, and also groups. And so, uh, speaking of groups, San Diego County, uh, um, gun owners, we had a, um, a board meeting the other day and our good friend Barb, she's a board member and she was, uh, we were talking about her group, a girl and a gun. And I asked her to, to come on and, and, and tell us about it and tell how people can get involved. So Barb, what are you thinking?
How you doing, Barbara?
Hey Lance.
Thanks for taking.
Thanks for having me on.
Yeah, my pleasure. I mean, it's a summer day here in San Diego, right? Finally.
Oh, it's gorgeous out. Yeah.
You know, and we got Joe D'Amici right here as well.
Yeah.
How you doing, Barbara?
Hi Joe.
So tell us about.
How are you?
Tell us about Girl and a Gun.
Well, a Girl and a Gun is, uh, a shooting, nationwide shooting organization that there is a, a chapter here in San Diego, uh, for, and basically it's women getting together in a, um, encouraging, supportive, safe environment to shoot guns. Um, we have our meetings down at, um, Discount Gun Mart. Uh, we meet monthly. Um, it's the first, second Tuesday of the month from 11 to 1:00 called Trigger Time in case, for those of you that want to attend during the day. Uh huh.
I like that.
The fourth Thursday from 6 to 8 is Girls Night Out.
Okay, great.
That's always a fun time.
So, so what?
And then starting in August, we're doing a, um, a Girls Night Tuesday, um, Tuesday night from 6 to 8 for, more for the new shooters.
Right. So, so what does it take to, to join the group?
Uh, it takes coming on down to the range and, uh, attending one of our meetings.
And they don't have to have a gun?
No, no. We, you know, everybody, everybody shoots.
Maybe they do.
At a Girl and a Gun at some point. Uh, but the whole point is that if you have an interest in, in firearms and you're at that point that you want to do something about it, come on down. Um, Discount Gun Mart, you can rent a gun at. Um, but we'll just kind of, you know, take in the fold, if you will.
Right. You know, walk through the safety measures and all that and.
Yeah. Yeah. We're, we're, we are strongly into safety.
So is there, is there a fee? Is there a fee for this to join?
For the actual meeting, well, to join, um, as a national member, it's, uh, $50 a year. It's really not much.
That's nothing.
And, uh, that gives you, yeah, that gives you all kinds of, all kinds of things. Um, we have a, like even a, um, yearly, uh, national conference. I just got back from Texas, you know, in April, had a blast with, you know, good 600 other people from other chapters around and, and all kinds of training. And it was just really nice. Um, but yeah, you just, um, basically come on down. Um, it's, uh, you know, $2 for a meeting and then, um, possibly $10 for, uh, range fees if you're not already a member of the range. But, um, we, you know, kind of meet you and find out what your skill level is. We generally have an hour's class of some sort. Um, it can be on safety or it can be on, you know, the parts of a gun or, you know, changing magazines. You know, we, we vary, we have various different programs that we kind of run. Um, and then we spend an hour on, on the range.
Yeah, that's fabulous.
You know, some women, when they first, first get there, just want to watch. Others, you know, are ready to go.
Yeah. I, and it sounds like a lot of stuff I could actually use myself, but I know a lot of people, you know, I go to the range and, and I see a lot of people there. But and Joe and I talk about this about, you know, but doing other stuff by, instead of just going to the range. So getting involved in the group, the, the education that you're doing is fabulous.
Yeah. And that's, that's one of the, the, um, strong points about the group. It's not just, hey, let's go down the range and shoot.
Right.
You know, it's, it's meeting other women that, you know, um, are into the shooting sport. It's learning about what you're doing. You know, a gun is not something that you can just pick up and, and fire. You know, you may hit your target, but you're, you're not necessarily in a good supportive, safe environment where you're learning what you're doing. You know, and that's what we're kind of, you know, all about is making sure that we give an environment to where no matter what your skill level is, we have everything from people who've never held a gun before to a competition team to law enforcement.
So Barb, are you and Judy and the girls gonna be at the Women on Target event from the Lemon Grove Rod and Gun Club up in Alpine in July?
Um, that's, that's something that, um, we're kind of discussing. Um, we have been doing more with Lemon Grove Rod and Gun Club. You know, primarily our group is, um, uh, we have our monthly meetings, but we're starting to branch out a little bit because we're getting a lot of interest from, from different, um, different levels within the club. Like I said, we're getting together a competition team. We're going to be going to Lemon Grove, hopefully Rainbow and, you know, kind of branching out a little bit for those that want to do that.
Yeah, I met Judy at one of the, uh, Women on Target things a couple of months ago. We were both mentoring there and just, uh, a fantastic, uh, person. Judy Wells, I believe. It's your, um, one of your, your big leaders.
She's our chapter facilitator and she is just hands down wonderful. She's got a great personality. She's really into it and is very encouraging.
And she's a tremendous instructor and she's got a wonderful competition gun that I can't remember exactly what it was, but I, when I shot it, I thought, oh, this is wonderful. I love this.
Yeah, yeah. She is, she is good at that. And also my, my, uh, co-instructor Kathy, there's, uh, uh, two of us that work with Judy instructing. And, uh, we were just up at Rainbow this last weekend and I was just, you know, it's, it's one of those, you have to bow down before her. Cause you know, uh, she just is a dead-on shooter, you know, and we went head to head on something and I was like smoked.
And what do you shoot?
I'm a Glock girl.
Okay.
Yeah. I'm a Glock 19 is generally what I shoot.
Yeah, nice. Always good.
Always a good thing. Definitely.
Good. Well, um, Joe, any other questions?
Yeah, no, uh, that was good. I was just gonna comment. I'm being a Glock person myself. I just, uh, I got into that and, uh, not, not that I did any research or learned or anything. I just, uh, that was what everybody had when I took my first lessons. So I just went with it and it's been great. I've got three of them now.
Yeah.
And, uh, I shoot the 34 for competitions.
Yeah, it's nice.
And I carry the, uh, 19, which is really nice.
Well, that 34 makes you look good. I've been out in the range with you. So you need that.
Yeah.
Anyway, well, listen, thank you very, we appreciate you calling in.
Okay. No problem. Have a good day. Thank you very much.
Yeah. And hope you, hopefully you'll call in again and again. Any listeners out there, uh, how can they get ahold of the website or something like that?
Um, the website is just agirlandagun.org is the national website.
Okay.